Okay, gentlemen, we're online, so I'll call this work session to order. And we only have two things on the agenda today. And we're gonna talk about roads and road department shop building. And if there's anything else y'all need to talk about, we'll discuss it at the end. So Chris, thanks for coming to join us. It's always good to see you. You wanna start with, I guess you wanna start with an update on Phase One?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Basically, we're down to short roads on Phase One. There's a little additional striping that needs to go down to Locktown and Waymanville. I had the privilege of riding on the roads last week. They're in very good condition. There's a few areas that the shoulder's gonna be regrasped in the next couple of weeks. Had a great execution by the contractor, the Hudson County team that's done a great job supporting us in our mission. And we're down to one last pay application to get the final striping. And I'm pleased to report that we'll be under budget probably around $100,000 once all said and done. Still trying to finalize those numbers, but we delivered the program successfully on time, under budget, and that's what we're here for.
That's good news.
Any questions about Phase One?
The regrasped, and we do not mow them this first round, but we're fixing to get on some of them in the second round.
Okay.
Is it okay to mow them?
Well, I told CW that they should mow them. Now, if you wanna talk and do something different, because I saw some rye grass and some pretty tall stuff that was chucked out, maybe some permanent vegetation. So I talked to Zach Willingham on Wednesday and said he needs to bring his mower in, but we can talk offline. If it makes sense for you guys to hit it while you're out there, if not, that is the contractor's responsibility for that first cut.
Yeah, well, we didn't do it, Phil. We didn't want, just trying to get established.
That's right. And there's a lot of places they've got some nice grass growing. Hopefully get that cut and get that temporary grass down, that permanent will pop real good. The, was it Pleasant Valley Road that we had the issue with? Is that what it was?
Mm-hmm. Just said, when you look at.
Yeah, yeah.
Single cheep.
I think it's got to be a, so we're talking about, I guess, some heavy equipment damage to, that it was when we turned it over. It's more than a bag of patch mix. I think there's some reclamation that needs to be done, could be some milling, definitely some overlay.
Well, that's why I suggested some of it.
And if y'all, if the commission is fine with it, I'll prepare that as a summary to Jason and send it to him as far as our corrective action method that we would prefer. And then you guys can let the.
Yeah, if you just give it to Jason on it.
Yes, sir. Any other questions about Phase One? So the map that we have on the screen, it kind of gives you a geographic representation. The black lines, as you can see, are the resurfacing projects that we completed in Phase One. The yellow is the re-stripe only, which is 100% done so far. Alex, remind me, Phase One went around 30?
Thirty point two miles.
Thirty point two miles. Based off of the suggestions by commissioners and some of our independent analysis, talk with James and his crew, we've developed the Phase Two resurfacing program. Those are the lines in red. We do have each commissioned district geocoded, but make this as far as the patching that's required and then a traditional overlay. So that's why some of these unit prices vary. Obviously, we had real good data from Phase One to develop some of these pricing. And basically, if we were to execute all, there are 40, how many roads are there?
On the Phase Two program? Look, about 42 miles.
Forty-two miles. If we were to implement all 42 miles, just as an engineering estimate, we'd be at six million. Now, something to point out, as far as chemical drive, I think it was the intent that we're gonna look at it a different, maybe a county perform function instead of getting the contractor out there. I think that was kind of a low priority road when it came to everything, just to the shape of it.
We would have to do asphalt and not surface treatment.
Correct, yeah, because you don't really have a whole lot of surface treatment left. So that's kind of why we have that as an outlier. Also, on Jeff Davis Road, this is not a full re-treatment. It's a patch and go type deal with the caveat that the bridge replacement job will come one day down the road. So we held a budget for that and then also held a budget for the approaches at Poggi Road. One thing I would point out, based off of what we saw, that's a good candidate for any type of remediation. I think it's in a very poor condition and it's not gonna get any worse. It's gonna take a lot of money to make it better. And if y'all have an opinion on that, we'd be glad to, you know, we're rating it through eyes of cost versus condition. So y'all, the road that we looked at, Alex, would you speak to a couple of roads that you saw that we might could get away with a little different?
Good candidates, high traffic volume that need repairing. Call Town, I might would, you know, if we come in and need to cut a budget a little bit, I might be one on our short list. It's very low traffic, it's not in that bad a condition. I know it's further next to it. That's one place to, if we need to cut, that's one I would suggest cutting. Ridge Creek, there's not much road left, so from the time this was done, I would say, you know, that would, you'd probably have to just mill it up and start over. There's not much left of the surface treatment that was out there. It's mostly pothole patching now.
And out of your butt. Another one also, Spur Bluff, the way that I priced that based off the direction would be some type of overlay. Based off of the condition of that, I think maybe even a steel coat and a re-striping would get you a little higher profile. I did not see the road in that very bad a condition. There may be some small potholes that we could do a full depth replacement, but that would be another road I think we could consider doing a little different than a traditional overlay. We understand the high profile of road that it is in the county, but I feel that was where we kind of left over to decide it was just a small portion of it that we were asked to address. But I think until we put some resolution to the bridge maintenance project, I think we may wanna relook at that or at least bid it as an alternative. And that's what I ultimately suggest, if we want to prioritize the top 10 or 15 and then bid the remainder as additive alternates and give you guys the opportunity, I think we'll see what the market is. I know, speaking to a lot of the local contractors, they're in the midst of paving season, several folks have got a decent backlog. So there again, like we did last year, coming in on the tail in the paving season, I think we'll be in good shape to get competitive pricing again.
This.
We're working off of basically 4.5 billion for the Phase Two of the spots plus the mid money. And that's, we're trying to figure out what that final number landed in that. As you can see, we do have Pickard Road included in that to around 750,000, which would be the mid money, like we did last year. We added it to the pot and when it kind of shook out, we were under budget. And then I don't know how y'all have, that's the money.
It's ballpark, I mean, and I know, I know length of the road and all that factors in, but price difference between surface treatment and asphalt.
So if you're looking at traditional asphalt mat, you're looking around $9 a square yard. If you're looking for surface treatment, you're anywhere between $4.75 to $5.50. So almost half, but you know, what I caution everybody, and Mr. James, you can back it up on this, surface treatment is good for your start. You're gonna see a lot of unwrapping, a lot of tearing up. The commuters are gonna talk about the ride of the road. It's not an asphalt road. One thing that we have been doing with our surface treatment roads is doing a sand seal on top. But for that sand seal to be successful, you have to kind of divert traffic for a while so it cures out, you know. If not, the sand will be in excess of square to do that, but it's nominal once you look at it and do a comparison. And another thing, as y'all know with the surface treatment, it's a little, and I think we've got several, probably five to 10 roads that are excellent candidates for surface treatment, but the community needs to understand, you're a construction. It's a different process, you know, there's gonna be loose rocks, James and Jason and probably all of you guys are gonna be calling about windshields and stuff like that. And, you know, we've been on this for 20, and he's picking up at our office, hadn't cured out yet. So I caution the commission that must be very deliberate when we use these solutions.
Already surface treated. If we surface treated it again.
Surface treatment is not a candidate. I can tell you that if we go do a surface treatment road and somebody goes logs six months, a year, two years down the road, you'll see it. And that's not the right application in that scenario.
Is that the same situation we'll have with?
How long that road been surface treated? Most of our surface treated roads have been down.
Probably 20 years, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of them are original.
Mm-hmm, surface treated.
So they go at 40 years.
That's, I don't know, we got any 40-year asphalt roads?
40-year asphalt roads? I wouldn't think so. But it hasn't been overlaid over time.
I'm just, I'm just making that point, man.
Yes, sir. And I think with the volume of traffic, those roads are held over very well.
So I notice Pickard, we got Pickard, you know, where, you know, that was our L big. We're going to have surface treatment on it.
In my price scenario, I priced it very similar to Hollis, where we would do a full depth patch replacement, do an open gradient, an OGI lift, and then pave it out with asphalt. And that's all open for discussion.
You're saying asphalt Pickard?
Yes, sir. That's how we have a price in this scenario. Like I said, much like we did Hollis. And why not have?
Surface treatment.
Now, it shows on the, what is existing, so that, this is basically what is existing. I didn't put a column about what was what, I probably should have, I apologize for not being more clear. But I've got Chris Carlson County, I think it makes it completely different.
So that column is existing?
Yes, sir, and I apologize, we should have clarified that.
That price, we've talked about wide in Pickard Road, is that right?
Yes, sir, it does. Yeah, that's getting from that 20, 21 placement to the full 24 foot section.
And Baker Bridge, that's, that's not, that's just, that's the one out there cutting and patching, right? That's not?
Yes, sir, that's not, that's, I mean, that's in pretty good shape and it's a kind of a cut through between Jeff Davis and.
Seven four.
Seven four, yeah.
We had in a note here that one mile south of Jeff Davis is the worst section and then it's, from there down, it's been resurfaced sooner. I mean, it's maybe been a while, but it's, the first mile south of there was really bad, the rest of it might can just patch the bad section.
I guess probably from what I call Daniel curve there. What center is that?
If it was done the same time the whole road was paved, that's just asphalt that was left over. There's still T asphalt that had been used on that road. So we probably chose from there about seven four.
That's, that's the best part.
That it was overlaid at the end.
Yeah.
It's a pretty long road, there might be a chance to save a chunk of money there if we just did that for a few.
Wow.
And that's, that's what I would say.
Yes, sir, and that, that, once we get into the, once we get the blessing on this, those type of options come up there, because a question I did have with James, just about the other person type I find, Mount Caramo Road, or Caramo, whatever you call it, it's like dirt, asphalt, and surface treatment. And then you keep riding and then you almost leave the county and then you come back into county if I didn't get crossed up the other day.
Both, all of ours is really paved. It's got some bad parts at the end.
Right there where it turned almost dirt, because you don't, you just don't have course, you just have a bed.
Going towards the low with that part, but the other ends, I would, scanning ends at the end of the pavement.
Okay.
Never crossed.
Okay, and then if you take, you can get back into the county and kind of curve back around, once you go past, is it Coleson or what's the little town that you get?
Clule?
Yeah, there you go.
I don't know.
No, I don't think it's the county, but I think that road extends in, it crosses over into Crawford County, like you said, and then if you ride it all the way through, you can kind of.
Take that eighty.
Yeah, take eighty and cut the signs up. Where the county lead and the city lead the hill.
Yeah, Willis Road, you know, where's that, where's that line out there, you know? You've got that distinct dip where that pipe is sagged, I mean, who owns, is that Lamar County side with that?
It actually, the pipe's ours, we replaced it. It ain't fall, I mean, it fall past the pipe.
Yeah, that's, that's a good example.
Yeah, definitely some of this perimeter roads that cross into the county, it, from a layman, it gets a little confusing on, it could have been a top in there, it could have been.
Is it small?
We're using it as a tool, it's not, and as you can very well tell, we're not using it as a guide, that if it falls in this, it's a go. It's eyes out the windshield, getting out, walking roads is helping us determine.
I guess my question is from your view, I mean, I know what my view is, but from your professional view?
It's a 45 or 50 at best, in the condition it is now, maybe less. And I too agree with you, in my opinion, it did not deteriorate.
Yeah, of the 40, 42 miles that's listed on here, is surface treated.
I'd probably say, and don't, hopefully to, you can quote me, 50/50?
50/50?
Yes, sir.
And Willis Road would be a surface treated.
Then we bring up Ben Hill Road, I know we talked about that with the, you get it for the level that's going on, I definitely think that's a good opportunity. It may need to also be widened a little bit, just with all the big truck traffic and this section, Eastmore is crossing from here to 36, we may wanna look at, it's not in bad shape, but once all that traffic gets routed that way, probably would be, if y'all think it'd be, you know, worth the money in this phase, it'd probably be a good preemptive resurfacing treatment there, so that section. It's just all that's confirmed, it's gonna, gonna happen in the near future.
Yeah, that's from the, basically, you need to come up with a railroad crossing to 36.
Yes, sir. Around that curve.
Yeah, it's, it's not a long length and it, it does need some surface treatment. I mean, it is starting to crack up a little bit, it's not as bad as some roads, but it's high traffic, about to get even higher, so.
And Knight Trail is another good, I think that serves a valid purpose in the county. I really cleaned that pretty quickly, it's not in parkour shape, I think it's more of a civil job and maybe it's a small patch.
How with the Knight Trail, I agree with what you said on that, but, you know, we base those type of, I know it'll all make a civil job, it's a patch, it's fairly quick work, but if our, if we, if we business out, it comes back in and we do it at the same time a year we did last year, so we're riding those too. So that's, that's, that's high traffic.
Yes, sir. I think we'll just have to, you know, put that in the bid package to look at an alternate timing for that because of the amount of people that it serves and the amount of traffic that you're getting in those peak hour, AM and PM. We not want a paving chain or a truck out there backing up mama and daddy and grandma and grandpa and everybody else and school buses and there's a life safety issue involved in there too. So we'll be very deliberate with that.
Yeah, and four lanes will help a little bit just for staging, keeping traffic moving and everything, but it may be an opportunity to do it, you know, on the weekends or.
And to let you guys know, with this pass route, we probably were, Saturdays on two of the four months that we paved, I mean, we were riding on Saturdays a lot. A lot of it was the weather, we'd get rain during the week, but I don't, you know, these contractors, they make money by running tons and by working and these employees make their money during paving season, so they have a, a lot of them sit at home during the winter time and come back to work in paving time, and they wanna work 67 hours a week, so I don't think that would be a hindrance to anybody if we set some time limits or at least control when they have that road. And with something like that, depending on the bid that we choose, knowing that it's four lanes, you got two on each side and a mile long, you know, it could be accomplished in the weekend, if everything goes well. And we were running Sundays, three. One thing that we, we didn't really talk about in the meeting, and I know last year we had a separate pot of money for the, the re-striping, as I was riding the county, you know, we all know what paint does to a road and, you know, it makes it pop and, you know, I saw a lot of candidates that would, could use a shot of paint that we wanna look at, grab another handful of, that whole program cost us about $150,000. And we sprayed, how many miles can you put it up?
I'm sure that's in there.
Yeah, it's, it would be, I think it's on the.
Yeah, I don't think it's in the spreadsheet, is it?
I think it was around 30 something.
30 something miles, that 30, almost 40 miles we covered, and that, that got us a lot of safety bank for a buck there, because that's, that's what that's giving you, defining that shoulder, defining that center line.
Speaking of miles, why'd they change the yellow line color? You know, it's just a little bit more orange than it would yellow?
There's probably a little hue to it, I, I just think it just.
No, there's a big difference.
Is it? I, I haven't really picked up on it that much.
If you look at it then? Well, a lot of this is high density, what's going down.
Yeah, versus what you had referenced.
So.
That might be the color that you're seeing, it's got a little more shot in the polvers that's usually make it stick.
Oh, it's different, this is yellow and this is orange.
Yes, sir.
There's a big difference. Orange probably lasts a little longer, that's what.
But, but some roads that I would look at, just in my, and this is not, I'm not trying to propose a list, but is it Fallon Road, Hickory Road, Butts Road, Hark Road, Harold Road, Flint Ridge, Fort Road or Fort Drive, those just stood out as candidates that you couldn't really see evidence of paint that, you know, you go there and stripe those and, and I think, you know, if we wanted to go down that route, I feel like we can get a pretty good list together and make some impact as well, from a safety standpoint. And that might be what you wanna look at the savings for Phase One, allocate that to maybe a re-striping project that we did at the same time.
You mentioned Hark Road, and I know we're holding off on resurfacing Hark Road until October, Highway 19, probably what, maybe next year's L big or something, what's that?
You know, we agreed back, get it once off construction, where you see more at the intersection.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's just that tree, you know, is that, what are we gonna do about that tree? Is that, I mean?
We've dug, we, we, I right away. I had to major, but it's close enough.
And just let, let everybody know, I reached out, I was riding down Poggi the other day, and the same about Poggi, with the, the bridge, on ramps of the bridge, that big dip, I thought my boat trailer was gonna come off. And so I reached back out to Mr. Presley, he's had somebody contact me and we can talk offline about that, gave us some ideas on it. We seem to know what we think total cause would be to prepare that, what we think cause of it is, we put that.
Excuse me?
We've got a sign in there, right?
Yes.
It says caution dip or something.
Yeah, we've, we've got, we put signs to, to try to caution before the heat.
They've got my attention, even though I still said.
And if we do wanna hone in on that key group and get alternates, I think we'll have a good opportunity to get us in budget whenever we establish that final model.
If we bring this to our next meeting, we approve this list.
I would like to get the advertisements going in 60 days after that, with all plan specs, the whole nine yards, on a big date. Give us a month to advertise, so in 90 days, we could have a concrete work.
Yeah. Wish we could change the time of year, because sometimes we really need to be doing this stuff where it ain't raining and everything else and how we.
Well, we, you know, had school out.
Yeah, yeah, you know, move this timeline back to December to bid it out and then when the heat comes and the dry weather comes, we go forward until, wait till the fall and the winter starts this property somehow.
A lot more competition in the summer too.
That's, that's the problem, you know, I saw the three asphalt companies and they said they couldn't look at it until spring of 2021. And that's from availability, it, it might mean something too. But we'll take the direction from you guys if we want to. We can compress that schedule, we can look at it differently, start earlier.
Well, you know, more for the bank for the mud.
Yes, sir.
If you, well, it got mud.
Even at 90 degrees versus 50 degrees, it, you know, it gives us that product, but.
It's gonna seem to be kind of warm, obviously, I was there since that, it's still getting warm in October.
We, we got blessed, we, we got a little rain towards the tail.
Yeah. What, what is, what, what we, I know we kind of put this list together, is this kind of, we want to put a big list together, or we, we will it down from here, is that, is that our intention? Hi? I don't think so. I think this would be what we want. I mean, I'm looking at that bottom line number, and I think, we have to talk to Kid Help, you know, will it down?
And just like we did with Phase One, as we get into the design, you know, we're gonna start qualifying, right then, 4% of the contractor last year with our engineering estimate. So, you know, some roads may go up, some's gonna go down, because I'm assuming, you know, X amount of patching per road, I get out there and we start measuring and getting the quantities, it might under run a little bit, so, you know, I fully envision that that number is gonna do, the only thing it's gonna do is go down. I, I don't foresee any of that going up, based off of what we've done and the amount of effort that we put into it. So with that in the back of my mind, thinking about a program the size that we have 50 on that, you know, think about, you know, do we, on some of these smaller roads, you know, do we wanna spend the money and get, get it back up to full pool or do an alternate? I, I think there's 100 to 200,000 dollars on that list that we can move around to get you where you need to be. And another thing, what Commissioner Paul talked about, right now, you know, we're still seeing a market correction, asphalt and AC, the legal component of asphalt is the cheapest it's ever been, and it's, and they're booking futures into next year, so that asphalt price is getting locked in. You know, you're buying asphalt a lot cheaper today than when we were when we implemented this program. So I'm using last year's prices because that was the last rule Hudson County numbers we had, but, you know, with the asphalt prices falling, the futures looked like when we were gonna implement that, and he told me 5% to 6% is what they're seeing on big savings that they're bidding for stuff that they're doing, they're gonna put out next spring.
And that covered about 30% of the surface miles that we own, too.
True.
Yeah, that's good stuff.
Sure is a lot of bad roads that didn't take it up.
There's still a lot of the wrong way to go.
You get a lot of them, yeah, sure, yeah.
They sure are.
Well, I think that was the right direction that y'all set up, that when you got into those cluster areas, why not grab that intersection in that side road because the width is there?
Get out of there.
You know, getting into District or Commission Two with Jeff Davis and Pickard and Burkett and all those, keeping them clustered together, that would be my direction that I give the team going for, is if we, if we can keep clustering that, not having little boys moving and putting up and down the county roads to get to a half mile here, a quarter mile here, two miles here, we're gonna start seeing that overall, you know, pavement program improve and impacting the areas, so I, I commend the team for looking at it that way, and I think that's a very smart approach that y'all took with this route.
Let me ask a question. Didn't we talk about Poggi? I mean, I know that ain't my district.
We had a Phase Three pave as you go, along with like a contracted patching, with the county doing a yearly program where we had a third party come in and do patching on bad roads and just at bad spots. That's why I think normally we're talking about, there's still monies and pebbles from the county to do the road work outside.
to do the roadwork outside of T-spots and that might be where Poggi comes into phase three outside of the spots.
This is right, right.
Yeah. Well, you bring up a good point too, and we know Poggi's in bad shape and we know, we know the kind of traffic that's on it, not just volume, type of traffic.
Right.
And, uh, you know, some point we gotta, we gotta tackle it, so if we can find a way, you know, if, if materials are so much cheaper now...
Yeah. But, and we don't mind looking at it and, and putting some piece of paper on, see what's caused, the, uh, that would be, there's a lot of full depth replacement out there, it's all very well, no, for a long stretch, I mean, and that, you get the price instead of a hundred fifty in a thousand miles, it goes to fifty real quick, like, so...
Right.
Uh, I, I think the direction that when Jason and I and Mr. Daniel talked, we didn't want to, for lack of better terms, hog the program with one road and I think without being strategic about it, Poggi will consume a lot of the money. And, and one thing that, that, you know, we can talk about and people might come up and say, if we prioritize some of these asphalt, I don't mind going in there and just see where it lands, you know, uh, we may get a deal on it and it might surprise us. Nobody beholds us if we had twenty alternatives and we sit here around the table and say, I want that one, I don't want that one, to get to that number. I'd rather, you have the options than the contractor having the option.
Yeah, or I like the option of, you know, what would it be? And especially if we're down there working on that, that bridge.
And I've carried some pretty heavy money, I think it was around a, uh, pull that spreadsheet again.
Yeah.
I think I had a hundred and fifty just off the, you know, just kind of looking at that replacement, getting that part up and doing the pipes and everything else, so I think there's an opportunity, uh, if you incorporate that and just see where, where it was fixed.
Good alternative to have. Okay. All right, well, we'll, uh, we'll chew on this and give James.
Before y'all get to the next step, Alex and I will update the column with what the existing services and what the proposed issues is, just to have you, you guys make that decision and, uh, we'll get that turned around with next day or so, so with Jason, I think Jason's back tomorrow, I think he said...
Want to make sure all the surface treated roads are changed in the area.
So y'all getting complaints on that stuff?
No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, folks.
He gets ahead, by the way, gets started.
Uh, you know, look at the list. Last one is existing events. He's going, he's going to update this and tell us what the payment solution would be. Okay. Well, obviously, what we need to get moving on is so we can get the bid out and go from there. Any other questions about road pave before we go to the...
Being a situation to compare apples and apples. And that's the worst thing that we can do is to get into a, oh, I assume that I could reuse this member, but now that I've gotten there, I need to replace twenty-seven of these that I assumed that I was going to keep and here I was low bid by a million dollars and here's a two million dollar change order, what you want me to do now, Mr. County? So, and, and I had an old conversation with Todd and, and he felt the same way, that the architect, um, I think we need to just, uh, bring a structural engineer in here that works for us to analyze the members, see what's salvageable, what needs to be replaced, uh, what type of, uh, direction we need to head into and prepare a little more documents and specs for a very solid bid environment.
Was the, was the build... Well, it wasn't declared a complete loss, was it? It was, it was far as the insurance policies.
All that maximum amount.
There's no going back to the end, they just said, okay, we're done.
That's what, we can't go back and search to get the claim if we find that it's hidden damage.
The lower, it's four ten, didn't it?
That was contact to, that was contact.
Like a truck.
Truck crying, yeah. So that didn't give him much of a...
The stuff that Todd did here is very instrumental in getting them to that point, go ahead and pay them, pull them out.
My understanding, it took about three back and forths for them, but obviously they started off by X and when it was all said and done, y'all got a hundred percent of what was insured, so that was a win for that.
The, the work Todd did was pretty much to itemize and show the damage that insurance would, would have. But now, he needs to do that full design so we can bid out replacements versus bidding out a design and replacement and we don't know, you know, everybody could have a different opinion as to what needs to be done.
They had engineers coming in, look at the beams, the main beams, but we know the purlins is going to have to be a black thing with that. But the main beams are all right. One of them, they're engineers.
You need to, uh, put that...
If you're in there for one, but I didn't, this has been one of six months. Yeah. They had no power, no... Yeah, it's, it's a struggle.
Slab, slab got come up?
Yeah, I, I think, I think if you want to skin it, get it framed, that's the start of that. And use, use as many column beams as you can and replace it, uh, so I, I don't think it's a total crazy rebuild, but, you know, I think we need to ensure that plumbing, all the plumbing fixtures or fixtures come in and everything.
So it could happen pretty quick.
So I called him on Monday and we had a meeting today to discuss where we go from here.
Electrical, a new replacement was...
From the feedback, yeah, because you don't want to deal with any of those potential issues from heat and electricity don't go anywhere well.
Slabs are in excellent shape, I don't know if they'll crack in.
Now, this is, I, by no means do I want to delay the design process, but if there's betterments or things that James wishy had, now's the time to get that wish, wish list incorporated into the design.
Yeah, we kind of talked about that the other day.
And I know that's a loaded gun and nobody wants to handle it, but, you know, this is an opportunity to, in our lifetime.
I mean, it's, it was well designed in the beginning. I mean, it's a, I mean, we've had other candidates come up here just to look at our shop because they're thinking about building a new shop and they're going off what we got, so, I mean, it's, it's well designed, the way it's set up, just an electrical update, which is a plus. We sure have electrical.
Some panel upgrades and things like, maybe if you need to add more circuits or if you'd rather have an outlet here than there, I mean, those are the level details that we can really get into to make, you know, if, if everybody plugged into that corner, let's make sure you got enough outlets in that corner to service that.
Yeah, we talked about the heating system and everybody can sure that...
Yeah. Which we just put heaters in the...
I had the, the, yeah.
There he gets more of them. Better. Well, they're pretty good. Versus ain't having nobody.
And obviously, you know, whoever needs to be in that initial schematic design meeting, taking advantage of the footprint and, uh, out of some evaluations that Todd came up with, you know, giving that final blessing and then we'll run with that for sure.
Well, we'll put this thing in third gear and, uh, move on because Daniel's been without this thing, did what, January fifteenth or...
Yes. What is the estimated time? I mean, when are we thinking, uh, we can get this up?
You know, we got brought in, uh, as far as taking up the bid documents about a week ago, so as soon as I sit down and talk with Todd today, I'll have some direction. And I can tell we will be full speed ahead to get this thing on the street because we know the importance of that. They're not even getting the product that you want, bidding it out to contractors right now because even if a contractor goes to build it tomorrow, he's got to bring an engineer and do the own engineering itself too, so the, the engineering phase is part of, you know, uh, and that's, that's the first thing he says right there for that.
That's just a perfect opportunity for changelors.
Right.
I mean, that's a contractor to win the bid and to win the...
He's going to go in there and say, this is what I'm assuming, and then contractor B's going to say, this is what I'm assuming and see, and then for our staff, well, how do we reconcile that we're getting, you know, one guy may think he can reuse their outlet out there. Am I, and if this is a design deal, even as you're a design professional, I can't say you can't do it, you just got to prove to me that you can do it. Uh, because he's going to say, well, you told me to go to build it my way, you gave me the latitude. And that's, that's a panel order box that wants you open. We've had to terminate design build contracts midstream because we couldn't ever reconcile after that and that's a bad situation to be in.
Good. Way ahead third gear.
Smile.
Just hurry up and be...
Yeah, you got your new truck.
Yeah.
Love it.
It is.
Love it.
It's nice.
Yeah, use it.
We just started using it this week.
Yeah.
I don't want this building to take as long as it took James to get it off.
Well, you know, we know why that counts, it's time. That, that's okay. Um, how's motor crew?
They're on their second round, they actually started Monday on their second round, man. So, uh, the service week, as far as us knows, uh, they always go right behind us.
You see them.
Or hit them.
Hit them.
I don't think they're doing it. I haven't seen them out.
Yes, I've seen a lot of the trash.
Yeah.
After the cuts, they don't know anything. Get some of this, get some of this stuff out of the, some of the, some of the folks that put some of it, right?
Yes.
I've seen a couple of them mowed, I've seen any that I know mowed up, but seen some.
Where they piled all around them?
Where they, no, they've done some, some signs put up right away. They've come to ill...
Have mercy.
They don't move, they don't move. Uh, anything, any other by, by the ways for, we got EMC here. Appreciate what you guys are doing. I know y'all are extremely busy, but that's a good, good problem to have.
You guys keep us busy, we appreciate that. Y'all get our full attention.
But that's okay. It's, it's great, always quality product, so, especially when you, uh, you're saving money on, on projects too. All right. Any, uh, any other by the way?
I, I have a couple, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it's there. I, I have a, I've been with this before and, uh, several people have contacted me about speed books in the county and we can't do it. I don't, what do I need to tell them? If I won't answer that?
Speed books are... That's like the liability issue, you know, we just don't do them, that's what I would tell them on the call, I mean, we don't have any in the county at all.
Yeah, I, I thought that, though, you know, that we are not, we, we can't do a speed book in the county, the best thing to do for speakers is to keep calling the sheriff department and throw the road for them. Speaking of Sheriff Allen Road, sometimes full and sometimes empty, but it, it couldn't through, we don't have any law cutting and then I have talked with the sheriff about that and, uh, he said it was on patrol award, but, uh, I have, you know, it's hard to catch them, I don't see them, but I do see the log truck come through and, you know, I have followed the log truck off of eighty, make a right turn on Allen Road and come to nineteen and make another right. It's, it's hard to get the sheriff department, they had the right that.
Well, here's what I would do, try to take a picture of them.
Well...
Best you can.
And they'll drive it in.
I know. And it's hard to go there, take a picture of it.
It's hard not to do when you, when I see somebody doing something. I was, I was out one, last week on the road, turned and as soon as I turned the car in front of me, literally, I don't know if this McDonald's site was even that big, they just took it out and slunk it on the road.
A van just stopped in the road cleaning out his vehicle with church's chicken bags and throw them in the road. I got his tag number and I called the deputy and, uh, I go, I, I called him, I called it, I called it, they did it. They, they, he called it wherever, and the guy called me and he said later that it cost him two hundred and fifty bucks and I think he got his attention, he want to...
Signs, they got some nice looking new signs. I don't know how much these signs cost.
It's like Nutrour Trucks.
Yeah, Nutrour Trucks, but I mean, they are pretty and they look, they're, they're like stop signs now. And they're, they're lettered up really nice. You go up thirty-six, soon as you cross over into, into Lamar County, you'll see them all on the left-hand side over there. Uh, maybe we need to, you know, if we're never working in something to upgrade the no truck traffic signs. Uh, these are really eye catching, the ones Lamar County's got.
And what I was thinking about road signs, I had a gentleman reach out to me and, and it's, I think, I think it's become his own, traveling the county roads and, and noting where we're missing, uh, signs at intersections. I mean, I know it'd be our ideal, I, the ideal is that every intersection we've got both signs there. Anyway, he's put a very comprehensive list together, he's supposed to be getting it to me, so when I get that, I'll get to Jason, you, y'all figure it out, but, yes, yeah.
Yeah, it is kind of frustrating, but I mean, it ain't, it ain't just, it's, it's every county. The problem is keeping them there, right? That's always, that's always beautiful, them not getting stolen.
Stolen, knocked down.
Knocked down, my problem is stealing them. You put them up, then they gone and we took, hmm, somebody's took you, stole the sign. Yeah. I mean, all of our road, all of our road from Nutrour Trucks are posted Nutrour Trucks, you know, but it's a matter of enforcing.
Right.
You know, that's right. I mean, we can put up signs and nice signs, but you should be able to enforce it.
All right. Any other by the ways? You know, the, the governor just, uh, extended the, uh, order through twelve July, I believe is the date, uh, for the news for these, uh, Ms. Brothers being sworn in by Governor Kemp today. Congratulate her when you had the opportunity, she's done a great work in her community. I guess Judge Miller's still waiting on his, uh, his swearing in today. Just any, any other, oh, by the way? All right. Well, that's really it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, by the way.
That's why I hesitated, I said, I'm just because I got something.
I did send an email out yesterday about the county picnic, I don't know if everybody had it, we canceled it just because of social distancing. It might go big there.
Yeah. I, I went to see the councilman last night and I heard them have a discussion about the, uh, the fourth of July fireworks. Sounds like they're going to move forward with some kind of limited capacity to accommodate social distancing and things like that, so, um, something forward to, to set your car in a while. All right. Well, there's no other business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
They're saying, yo, we're adjourned. Thank you, thank you guys.
Yes, sir.